Good evening, everyone. Thank you. This board meeting of the Board of Education for March 15th, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPTV Services website and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the week, the next two weeks, rather. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening and welcome to everyone here tonight. Tonight's brief board meeting will be followed by a work session with the Community Budget Review Committee as part of our annual budget engagement process. Tonight's also our first board meeting since Governor Brown lifted a mask mandate to ask you, a mask mandate in public spaces, including in school buildings. And so we ask you to continue to remember to keep the aisles clear, and if you're holding a sign, to please keep it low as to not block the view of those sitting around you. Our first item of business is to acknowledge National School Social Work Week. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this next item?
Thank you, Chair de Pass, and good evening, directors. This past week was, in fact, National School Social Worker Week more than ever. We're reminded that our social workers are vital to the health of our students and school communities. So I'm going to take this opportunity to share a couple of related remarks. In the past few weeks, there have been several incidents of hate speech at some of our schools. This continues to be a disturbing trend that we see in the Portland community and throughout the country. Each time one of these incidents happens or occurs, we follow our response to hate speech protocols, which were informed by Western State Center and Teaching for Justice. I want to remind our schools and community that our work remains focused on not only following these protocols, but more importantly, on leaning into our vision, our strategic plan, which calls on us to build school communities and cultures that are welcoming and reinforce a sense of belonging and bridging between everyone's identities. What we know is that the best response is to sustain the work of creating positive and affirming school cultures, where our students, staff, and partners know that they are valued and appreciated. And our school social workers play a critical role in meeting the needs of our students and families. In partnership with staff from our RESJ team, our communications team, school leadership, and our restorative justice team, they comprise together a hate response team that offers onsite support for impacted schools. And later at tonight's work session, we'll begin to share with you some of the initial thinking of how our social workers continue to be a key part of the equity investments we're making to support our theory of action to improve the outcomes for our underserved students. James Loveland, our Senior Director of Student Success and Health, is here this evening to share more about the specific role of our school social workers here at Portland Public Schools. James, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, directors. Superintendent Guerrero. I just wanted to start by saying, you know, now more than ever, we are enormously grateful for the individual and collective service that our social workers provide to PPS students and families. Also wanted to express our gratitude for the school board's prioritization and investment in school-based social workers. For Superintendent Guerrero's prioritization and investment in social workers over the past two years with the Student Success Act. Because of that funding, we've been able to add 36 social workers to our PPS buildings that now serve 45 buildings. And this is building upon the work that Multiple Pathways to Graduation did in alternative programs. We've had social workers at PPS for many years and feel grateful to be able to add them to our comprehensive schools. We see social workers as a critical part of student service provider teams, joining school counselors, school psychologists, qualified mental health professionals, as well as community partners, to offer a truly robust spectrum of service to our students. In addition to the comments Superintendent Guerrero just read, I'd just like to read an additional piece. School social workers build upon, uplift, and celebrate the strengths, resilience, and cultures embedded in school communities. The social worker's primary role is to remove the barriers to learning so that all students can access their education. Social workers engage in anti-racist practices by working to decrease barriers to learning created as a result of systemic racism, poverty, inadequate healthcare, and violence perpetuated against historically marginalized communities. We are so grateful for our PPS school-based social workers and grateful for your continued support of that program.
Thank you, Mr. Loveland. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6471, acknowledging National School Social Work Week? Six, 12 to six, uh, six, March 6th to 12th, 2022. Director Brim Edwards?
Second.
Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Scott seconds the adoption of Resolution 6471. Is there any board discussion? Ms. Bradshaw, are there any, is there any public comment?
No.
Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 6471, acknowledging National School Social Work Week, March 6th to 12th, 2022. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 6471 is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
You'll notice we have two absences, excused absences tonight, so we're not, Directors Green and Constam are excused tonight, so that's just the five of the six of us. Chair de Pass.
It went so quickly through discussion, I was just gonna add a comment if it's okay?
Please.
Sorry, I meant to say it during the discussion, but it just went right into the vote. I just really wanted to amplify the comments that were made in this year in which our students are back and in person, that, you know, as I visit schools, just the importance of social workers to the school community and the students make a really big, and families make a really big adjustment, that that's such a key component. I also have been in this district when there were very, very few social workers, so really applaud the district staff for making this investment in our school communities and thank all the social workers for their work in our schools, supporting our families and our students.
Thank you for bringing a human element to our meeting tonight. I appreciate, I appreciate that. The board will now vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items that you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion at the end of our meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's hard without Director Green here, because everybody's kind of waiting a second, because he usually gets the first motion. Director Scott moves, and Director Holland seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? And Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 64, 64 through 6470. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
We'll turn now to student and public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. First, and importantly, the board thanks you for taking the time to attend our meeting and providing your comments. Public input informs and improves our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. To that end, I'd ask each of us to give our full attention to the people in front of us as they're testifying. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues related, raised during public testimony, and we request that complaints about individual employees please be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask you email them to publiccomment@pps.net, publiccomment@pps.net. And be sure, please be sure when you make your, begin your comment, you clearly state your name and spell your last name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your comments. And before we go further into this public testimony tonight, I want to share a special statement from the Bridger School community on the sudden passing of a beloved member of their school community, Mrs. Collins. Mrs. Collins was scheduled to speak tonight and offer her testimony to the board. It's very unfortunate that she's not with us tonight. I want to acknowledge the sudden passing of Julia Collins, fourth-grade Spanish immersion teacher at Bridger this past weekend. Maestra Julia, as she was lovingly known to our students, was also a PTA president at Bridger, a mother to two young children and a beloved wife, daughter, sister, and friend. She was a pillar of the Bridger School community and passionate advocate for racial justice. She taught at Bridger for the past 11 years, starting as a student teacher and continuing to teach hundreds of students. Maestra Julia also coordinated Bridger's student government, teaching them the power of their voice and advocacy. Her former students include now middle schoolers, high schoolers, college students, and grads. Her impact on those lives has been powerful and, and on those in her fourth-grade class today. This is a tremendous loss for her family, her young children, parents, and sister, and also for her teaching colleagues, students and parent community, and Portland Public Schools. Maestra Julia was scheduled to speak tonight, and on her behalf, we'll call up Natalia Fernandez, a seventh grader at Kellogg Middle School. She and her older sister are former students of Julia's, and her younger sister is in Julia's current fourth-grade class. She will be followed by Connie Vasquez, a parent at Bridger. Gracias, gracias. She will be followed by Connie Vasquez, a parent at Bridger and fellow PTA leader with Julia, with Julia. So would you state your first names and spell your last names for the record? And you have three minutes each. Thank you for being here.
My name is Rebecca Fernandez, F-E-R-N-A-N-D-E-Z.
My name is Natalia Fernandez, F-E-R-N-A-N-D-E-Z.
PPS RESJ lens document states, "We believe in the fundamental right to human dignity, and generating the equitable world requires an educational system that intentionally disrupts and builds leaders to disrupt systems of oppression." On Friday, March 11th, 2022, PPS lost an unimaginably passionate and effective builder of leaders in the fight for social justice. In her decade with PPS, she empowered hundreds of students, their families to embrace, create, and control their own educational experience and outcome. She's had a special dedication to her families of color and an incredible ability to create unique inclusion for every single student. She was also our current PTA president and several of our student, our current board members and the PPA staff, PPS staff, has the pleasure of working with her to ease this impending relocation of our community.
Our dear maestra signed up to advocate for her community today and tragically cannot be here. Her family shared with us some words that she was preparing and is watching us live as we honor her memory from Maestra Julia. "In a few weeks, you will be considering a proposal from the Southeast Guiding Coalition to balance enrollment in K-5 and middle schools in this region. As you consider the proposal, please believe that we can build a stronger PPS by creating a reality where there are enough resources, energy, and good outcomes for all, dismantling the myth that the success of one BIPOC community can only come at the expense of another, honoring the lived experience of our communities of color, trusting BIPOC communities to be the decision-makers in their own futures and to know what is best for their families. In PPS, we should keep fight, we should be fighting for more support from, for BIPOC families, not less. We should keep in place those programs and supports that have been proven to be successful and use them as a roadmap for how we can serve other marginalized groups in our community. I ask that we take the animosity that has been misdirected at SELI programs and channel it into a determination to build a similarly supportive programs at a location that serve higher numbers of BIPOC and lower of SES students. We cannot say we are fighting on behalf of our BIPOC families while simultaneously ignoring their words and experiences. Our families deserve better. Our district mission statement says, 'We believe that communities, parents, teachers, and community-based organizations have unique and important solutions to improving outcomes for our students and educational systems. Our work will only be successful if we are able to truly partner with the community, engage with respect, authentically listen, and have the courage to share decision-making, control, and resources.'"
The loss of Maestra Julia Collins is an unbearable blow to our community, to this district and to the planet. She made a lifetime of change in just a decade. Her intelligence, empathy, and compassion were a gift to all who knew her. She is survived by her husband Chris and family, including two young sons, Calvin and Forrest, who are treasured part of our school community. In her own words to us all, "You are remarkable, you are inspiring, you are seen." Please join us for a moment of silence to mourn this incomprehensible loss of an incomparable mother, wife, sister, daughter, friend, and teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradshaw, who do we have next for comment?
We have, um, sorry, Maria Connie Vasquez.
Good afternoon. Will you say your name and please spell your last names?
Buenas tardes a todos los representantes de la mesa directiva de PPS.
Good evening to all of you from the table, representatives of PPS.
Y a cada persona que están aquí presentes.
And to every person present here.
Y a todo el público en general.
And to the general public.
Mi nombre es Connie Vasquez.
My name is Connie Vasquez.
Es, mi apellido es B-A.
Last name is V-A-Z.
Q.
Q.
U.
U.
E-Z.
E-Z.
Gracias por dejarme compartir el micrófono en este lugar.
Thank you for letting me share the microphone in this place.
Soy madre de familia de dos hijos que están aquí presentes.
I'm a mother of two.
Joshua, de quinto grado, y Belén, de primer grado.
Belén, first grade, and Joshua, fifth grader.
Ambos atienden clases de inmersión en español en la escuela primaria de Bridger.
Both attend school at Bridger?
Immersion.
Immersion.
Soy de México.
I'm from Mexico.
Y en esta noche.
On this night.
Vengo representando a mi comunidad latina.
I come to represent the Latin community.
Muy orgullosos de ser que somos de color.
Very proud to be of color.
Y nos sentimos parte de esta gran comunidad.
And we feel part of this community.
Sabemos que estamos viviendo tiempos de cambios.
We know we're living times of changes.
Algunos buenos.
Some good.
Otros malos.
Some bad.
Pero en esta tarde.
But tonight.
Vengo a compartir con ustedes.
I come to share.
Algunos de los argumentos.
Some of the arguments.
Que se están escuchando repetitivamente.
That are being repeatedly heard.
Acerca de los nuevos cambios.
About the new changes.
Que quieren hacer con la escuela secundaria.
They want to do to secondary school.
Y con nuestra primaria.
And to primary.
Son muchos cambios en tan poco tiempo.
There's lots of changes in such a short time.
He escuchado amigas.
I heard from friends.
Y conocidas.
And known people.
Que sus hijos asisten en la secundaria Kellogg's.
What's that? They go to Kellogg's.
Y muchos padres latinos.
And many of the parents are Latin.
Y no latinos.
And non-Latin parents as well.
Están frustrados.
Are very frustrated.
Molestos.
Bothered.
Y cansados.
And tired.
Por todos los planes.
For all those new plans.
Que quieren hacer.
They want them put into effect.
Una de las muchas cosas que se dicen.
One of the many things that are being heard.
Es que ya no creen en sus promesas.
They don't believe in their promises.
Ya no existe.
They don't exist.
Credibilidad.
Credibility.
En su palabra.
And their word.
Cuando hace dos años.
When two years.
Ustedes prometieron la secundaria.
The promise of Kellogg.
Para nuestros jóvenes.
For the kids.
Que iban a ingresar en el 2020-21.
That we're gonna enter in the year 2021.
Tanto para los niños de nuestra comunidad de Bridger.
Part of the students, the kids in Bridger community.
Y sus alrededores.
And its around.
Para mí es triste escuchar.
For me, uh, okay.
Para mí es triste escuchar.
For me, it's sad to hear.
Que ya no creemos en ustedes.
That we don't believe in you guys.
Cuando no existe algún tipo de garantía.
When there's no guarantee.
Para nuestras escuelas.
For our schools.
Ya que nos han demostrado que son variables.
They're, they're very changeable and variable.
Hoy pueden decir una cosa.
Today you guys could say something.
Y mañana nos cambian el panorama.
And tomorrow's a new panoramic.
Para mi criterio.
For my criteria.
Y de otros padres de familia.
And other parents.
Ustedes están menospreciando nuestras voces.
You guys are not listening to our voice.
Y opiniones.
And our opinions.
Quiero compartir una frase.
I want to share a phrase.
Que me dejó marcada, me dejó pensando.
That left me marked and thinking.
De un francés del siglo XVIII.
From a French person in the 1800s?
Todo para el pueblo pero sin el pueblo.
Everything for the town, but not from the town.
Y esta es la alusión.
Okay.
La alusión.
And this is illusion?
A la idea de un poder.
Of the idea of a power.
Casi absoluto.
Almost absolute.
Y sostenido por uno.
And sustained by one.
Cuantos tienen poder.
When they have power.
El cual brinda su pueblo.
That brings up to town.
Aquello que necesita.
That they need.
Pero sin darle mayores atribuciones.
But we got, without giving them much attributions.
A las necesidades del pueblo.
To the voice of the town.
Que vive día a día.
That lives day by day.
Porque una cosa es oír.
Because one thing is to hear.
Y la otra es escuchar las necesidades de otros.
And the other thing is to listen to the needs of others.
Tengo tres preguntas para ustedes.
I have three.
No me las contesten ustedes. Dice.
I have three questions, you guys don't have to answer the questions, though.
Para ustedes.
For you guys.
Se han preguntado sinceramente.
Have you asked yourself sincerely?
Cuál es el impacto a las minorías?
What's the impact on minorities?
En este caso, para los niños que se encuentran en el programa de inmersión.
In this case, are the students that are in the program, immersion?
Realmente están conscientes de lo que les está afectando a ellos?
You guys know, are you guys conscious enough to know what is affecting them?
The second question.
Second question.
Realmente los cambios que queremos van a traer beneficios o van a beneficiar a un solo grupito?
So the new changes, are they gonna benefit the public or are they gonna benefit just certain amount of people?
Número tres.
Number three.
Por qué están generando tantos cambios tan drásticos en las escuelas de, del Suroeste en tiempos tan difíciles?
Why are they generating so many changes, also so many drastic changes in the schools in the southeast in these hard times?
Y para finalizar.
And to finalize.
Estamos cansados.
We're tired.
Muy cansados.
Very tired.
Pero no derrotados.
But not defeated.
Seguiremos luchando.
We will still keep fighting.
Por nuestros hijos.
For our kids.
Y recordales.
And to remember.
También a nuestros maestros.
And to remember.
Que les apoyamos y estamos en solidar, en solidaridad con ellos.
And to remember that we're helping our teachers and we're sticking by them.
Porque realmente la muerte de nuestra maestra Julia nos hace recordar.
Because the death of the teacher Julia makes us remember.
El trabajo duro que hacen ellos.
The hard work the teachers did.
Y el amor que tienen a nuestros hijos.
And the love they show to our kids.
Que entregan todo su amor, su tiempo, su familia para con estos hijos.
That they give all their love, all their time to our kids.
De verdad espero de todo corazón.
I really hope.
Que los maestros también se les dé un trato digno, un salario digno.
That our teachers receive this thing, their justified salary and a treatment as well.
Para beneficio de ellos.
To benefit them.
De sus familias.
Their families.
Y para la educación de nuestros hijos.
And for the education of our kids.
Y jóvenes.
And the youth.
Que no son el futuro, son el presente.
They're not the future, but the present right now.
Uh, gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you and good night.
Buenas noches, thank you.
We have Nima Cruz, who is with us virtually, to be brought up in just one moment. Nima, are you there?
Um, yes, I am.
Hi, Ms. Cruz.
Hi. Do you mind? I don't put my camera on right now.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
And we can see your name, you don't have to spell your name, but it'd be nice for the record if you want to say your name out loud and then start your testimony.
My name is Nima Cruz, and I'm a sixth grader at Harriet Tunnell Middle School, and I've heard that the superintendent is possibly going to get a $75K bonus if we do better on the standardized test. And by us, I mean black students. First of all, and I'm sure a lot of other kids can agree, that we don't like taking the maps or the state test. All it does is make us feel like we're always failing, because whenever we get a few questions right, it gives us harder questions about things that we haven't learned yet. And when we get those types of questions wrong, it makes our progress go down. And now the superintendent is going to get a $75K bonus off of that? If you really think about it, it makes no sense at all. The people that should be getting the money are us. If we are improving our skills and doing better on the, as I like to call it, stress test, we should be getting the $75K bonus. And if not us, it should be going to our school so that we can improve our school with some of the problems that we have. Oh, wait, I forgot, they're already improving our school by moving it. Again, another decision you guys have made without our input. My point is that you guys are making decisions for us without even considering asking us how we feel about it. So I hope you guys take this into consideration and decide to change the decisions that you guys have made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nima, is Erin with you?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have Charlie Schroeter.
Hi, my name is Charlie Schroeter. Uh, you spell my last name S-C-H-R-O-E-T-E-R. I'm a fourth grader at Grouse Elementary. Five years ago, if you told my parents that I would be doing this, they wouldn't have believed you. In preschool, I was anxious a lot, and I didn't like to be around other kids. But in kindergarten, I was in a class of 21 students. That meant my teacher, Teacher Chris, could give me the individual attention that I needed to gain confidence and feel comfortable in school. We also had an educational assistant in the classroom that year. Now I'm gonna tell you some facts about Grouse. Grouse is a Title I school with over 10 languages spoken. Grouse is a Title I school with over ten languages spoken at students' homes. There are two Communication Behavior, or CB, classrooms. We really appreciate, appreciate all the staff, especially the teachers. But now the teachers are go-, going to be moved around and taken away. Less teachers means bigger classes. I know what it is like to have a huge class. My class right now has twenty-seven people in it, I think. At the beginning of the year, there were thirty-one. My teacher, Mr. Mao, explained to me that with a big class, it is hard to pay attention to individual students. It is hard to communicate with individual families, and it is hard to teach everyone at the right level. Fourth graders like me already know how to be in school. I'm more worried about the younger kids like my brother James. I think he's watching online right now. He is in kindergarten this year and he has seventeen students in their cla-, in his class, which is great. Next year, kindergarten and first grade are each going to have a teacher cut for them. So the younger kids will have bigger classes, which means less attention. Little kids need attention or else they won't be able to learn as well. I know that the average class sizes across the whole district are growing, but the average does not, not growing, I mean, but the average does not tell the whole story. At Grouse for next year, the average projected class size is twenty-seven students. This is the fifth highest average in PPS and the highest average for a Title I school. The next tallest average for a Title I school is twenty-four students. The average class size is projected at twenty-seven for both kindergarten and first grade. I know you'll have to make hard choices about how the schools should spend money next year. Please choose teachers at Grouse in every school. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
We have Rada Wiley Soon. Do we have Rada? Neil Murris. Neil Murris. Alex Freeman.
Quiero decir muchas gracias a la comunidad de Bridger. I wanna thank the community from Bridger. También quiero agradecer los miembros del consejo escolar, particularmente al superintendente. Um, y quiero agradecer también a la comunidad latina, la comunidad hispanoparlante. Eso es para ustedes. I know that some of y'all heard about a tragic loss that we had in our community. And I know that even though this is very difficult for me to do and accept, um, I think that this is something that Maestra Julia would have wanted as well. And in honor of nuestra comunidad. Um, we've been in a process of mourning in our school community. Um, and as a part of that process and holding space, one of the things that our classroom community, about half of those students, uh, were with Maestra Julia last year. Decided to do was to draft a letter in support of her class this year. Así que si hay estudiantes que están de la clase de la maestra Julia, eso es particularmente para ustedes. Um, this, I gave students the option to write a letter in English. I gave them the option to write a letter in Spanish because they're bilingual. I gave them the option to write it in both. And they chose a more progressive option, which is translinguaging. This is something that's addressed to her class, so it says estudiantes. But one of the things that we talked about in our staff meeting today after school in celebrating the life of our dear colleague, who is much more than a colleague. Um, was also that we're all students of Maestra Julia. It came through how much all of us have learned. And so with all due respect, I'm going to be leaving that part in. Dear estudiantes de Maestra Julia, los sentimos mucho. We're very sorry about what happened. Maestra Julia was an amazing teacher, friends, y miembro de la comunidad. Era una de las mejores ma-, teachers que podrías tener, y mucho más. Ollie aprecia su apoyo individual. Felicia remembers su ayuda de conectar con la counselor durante un momento triste. Fiona se acuerda cómo she offered help even if you weren't in her class. Anika aprecia su esfuerzo durante this distance learning, including making things fun, su positividad. And how she would even drop off school supplies in las casas de los estudiantes. We all really miss Maestra Julia. She was a really good persona. She put herself before others. Era generosa. She would help you when you needed help or if you were feeling down. Ella supported la comunidad de Bridger as president of the Parent Teacher Association. Advocated for students equitably with all of you, the school board. Facilitaba student council, eventos para fundraising for field study, e hizo videos para los estudiantes de Bridger. Tenemos muchas memorias lindas. Diego recuerda de los owl pellets y cuando se puso stickers en todo su face para que todo el mundo participara during distance learning. Joshua, que le acaban de ver con su mamá, remembers cuando jugaba Night at the Museum in distance learning. Anika recuerda learning about paper football. Not sure that's in the, um, GSC. Alex remembers su apoyo durante student council. Surreal recuerda de science names, acentos, y el lab coat que usaba durante ciencias. Sabemos que es un... Perdón. Que es un tema bastante difícil y probablemente siente muchas emociones. We know that this will be hard for all of us, whether it's students who have, uh, heard this year, had her in years past, or just interacted with her. We know that it's been hard even for us. Eventualmente, we will be okay. Queremos apoyarles, estudiantes. There's a bunch of adults you can talk to, but there are also students. In our classroom community who want to support you, including Percy, Anika, Violeta, Diego, Fiona, Surreal, Rosie, Alex, Elise, Felicia, y Oliver. Y creo que eso habla mucho del espíritu de nuestro colega, el miembro de nuestra comunidad. En solidaridad, la clase de Prof. Alex.
Chair, Les Darrow. Greg Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Gotta find the right pair of glasses here.
I understand. A lot of us up here understand.
Uh, my name is Greg Myers, M-E-Y-E-R-S. I am head custodian for the Portland Public Schools. And I have come here this evening to speak to the board about the staffing crisis in the custodial department that we have been struggling with for several years now. I have submitted a copy of an email from the union to Mr. Young requesting a hold on new civic use of building permits. Uh, it also includes his response back to us. Uh, until we can assure adequate support for these events as well as reducing the stress on our shorthanded evening staff. To emphasize these points, I would now like to read you an email from the night lead custodian at Cleveland High School to her supervisor. Goes as this. I am writing this email to let you know that the last five weeks at Cleveland High School have been physically and mentally exhausting on me and the one, one other crew member who works there with me at night. As you know, it has been me and one other person for going on six weeks. I am not saying that I can't do my job. I just feel that it is too much for two people to do. I am in no way trying to complain, but it is getting very hard to keep up with the demands of the staff, who are not the easiest to please. No offense to any teachers in the room. As well as, uh, the civic use of building permits. We have been unable to sanitize any restrooms for over a month, and it shows. We have also not been able to sweep classrooms or hallways for a month as well. Every day, I'm picking up things in the hallways along with large dust bunnies. All in all, I just want you to know how tired we are and how unhappy we are as well. These are two custodians attempting to clean a three, three hundred and one thousand square foot building with a current enrollment of one thousand five hundred and sixty students. That should be staffed with between nine and fourteen head custodians. In, in our prime, in our heyday, that's what would have been in a high school. After fifteen years as a head custodian, I know the sound and the feeling of someone who's defeated, and you just heard it. Those two people are doing their best, but they're defeated. Anybody in this room would be defeated to try and do what they're trying to do. I would really encourage all of you who are sitting in front of me to get in your car after work one day. Drive down to Cleveland High School. Not in the morning. Go there after the full day of school. Go in and see what the building looks like and see what they're up against. It will open your eyes. I guarantee it. The odds are two, from my experience, I'll tell you. One of those two people probably won't be working for Portland Public Schools within six months. They will leave and go find something else that they can do. That is part of the problem we're having. Where you're being asked to do, these people are being asked to do jobs that they physically cannot do day in and day out, and it wears them down. Not only phys-, mentally, but it also does it physically. We need livable wages to ensure sufficient staffing so our buildings can stay clean and safe. It's that simple. If you can't supply someone with a livable wage and then on top of it, you ask them to, um, to do something that has unreal expectations. You are gonna end up where we are right now, which is in a full staffing crisis. So I know we're in the middle of a budget preparation. I can tell you now, for the next few months, you're going to hear livable wages from our union a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can understand how.
Hello? I have some documents for the, uh, school board.
Thank you.
I wanna thank the Bridger community and SEIU 503 and the Grouse community for showing up and speaking your truth to power. My name is Beiyong Yu, B-E-Y-O-U-N-G-Y-U, he/him. In seventeen eighty-seven, a bunch of white men in positions of power declared black enslaved Americans three-fifths of a person in our constitution. Fast forward to twenty twenty-two, and we have district leadership counting our black and brown ELL students as half a person, a quarter person, or zero persons in regards to weighted ELD staffing. Whether the FTE increases slightly, decreases, or stays the same, we cannot count our black and brown English language learners as half people. It is Ibram Kendi that defines racism as a marriage of racist policies and racist ideas that produces and normalizes racial inequities. Just as this board was able to determine that displacing one community like MLK for another in Tubman was not the way. Our Asian students are not half students. Our brown students are not quarter students. Our black students are not zero students. Our immigrant students and their families are whole people. So let's not normalize this racist policy and call it equity. Walk a day in the shoes of an ELD teacher and you will see, we are community agents reaching out to the eighteen different school languages in our schools. We are tech leagues diagnosing Chromebooks and connecting translation services with wifi during home visits. We are mutual aid dropping off weekly food boxes to those families in need. I understand I am not valued as an ELD teacher. Even though I have served the Rosa Parks community for eight years, my position is one of many being impacted by these teacher cuts. Whatever PPS tries to lead the public to believe, state representatives have said the money is already there. I should be at home right now, fine tuning my resume and getting ready to interview at other schools. But this is my real resume, not the performative one we put on paper. No new teachers program, no colonized map data, and no Steve Ballmer outsourcing can outweigh the student-facing relationships we build in our communities. Relationships matter. Policy matters. English language learners matter. I am calling on the two district administrators and Dr. Proctor who approved and made this racist policy to not only reverse it, but to expand our ELL services. Keep the newcomers weighted as one point five and leave everyone else at one or more. This board, holding this district accountable, matters. English language learners bring in one point five funding into our buildings. Dual identify bring in two point oh funding into our buildings. The services should adequately reflect that money and not the superintendent's four hundred thousand dollar standardized salary.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for your comments tonight, um, your emotional comments, your passion, um, your interest in, um, better outcomes for all of our students. Um, thank you for being here. Again, feel free to follow up with our board manager, Roseanne Powell. If you have something specifically you'd like to follow up on. Um, and again, thank you for being here. Your, your concerns matter to us. Um, we're gonna move now to, um, board and committee reports. I'm gonna, um, encourage everyone to be brief, um, as we have a work session following this meeting. Student Representative Weinberg, would you like to share your report?
Yes, one second. Good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to start my report, um, by shedding some light on what the district student council does as elections at each individual high school are coming up. And also with the increased presence of students at each of these board meetings, I think it's important to shed light on the important roles that students are playing, sometimes behind the scenes, um, at the district level. Um, so the district student council is comprised of one student from every single high school, including our alternative high schools. Um, they collectively, um, help me make decisions on sometimes how to vote a peer, what's in my report. Um, and also have engaging discussions about current policies, upcoming policies, um, and decisions inside and throughout PPS. I encourage everyone who's interested to run at their individual high school. Elections are coming up in the spring. Um, if you know any high schoolers who are interested, please encourage them to run. Um, in addition to all this, um, every district student council representative has the opportunity to serve on one of the board committees. Um, and as of, I guess, tonight, we have two students on every single board committee, um, decided. So emails should be going out. We have. We have some new additions to board committees. Next, I wanted to talk about the new student rep election, which concluded this afternoon. And the next student rep is Byroni McMahon. She's actually sitting right here. She'll give a more formal introduction to you guys at the next or future board meetings. We haven't really talked about that yet. I also wanted to give an update on the National Student Board Member Association because we've made some important movements in relation to that. And hopefully this organization will play a larger role in future student board members and the advocacy at the state and national level for increasing student representation and student involvement at the district level. Because oftentimes, it's easy for school districts to say, we center students. But looking at uplifting student leaders, so we're student-led, having student board members have a vote, full vote, is just one thing that we're looking to push for. Also, we've started a research institute that will look at how student engagement is used, taken into account, solicited at school districts across the country. I also wanted to comment on the legislative, legislative session closing recently, and a lot of the unfinished business that we still see that wasn't passed out of committees or wasn't prioritized this session, including that two very important bills were the Racial Equity and Justice Youth Collaborative, which this is not the first time this bill has been in session, but we continue to see legislators not prioritize one, students, and also racial equity for students. Also, in concert with that is the Ethnic Studies Professional Development. With the state requiring K-12 education to include ethnic study standards, it would seem prudent to have professional development so that teachers can actually implement that teaching. Unfortunately, for the second year now, we have forgot to include that in the budget. Lastly, long-term computer, computer science program education was not passed on this session. As we know, computer education, computer science education is a growing field in the United States, and for students to continue to be competitive within Oregon and throughout internationally, we need them to be able to understand computer science. Lastly, I wanted to share some brief comments about the recent hate symbols at Cleveland High School. Byroni actually met with the Jewish Student Union, along with other student groups at Cleveland, to kind of discuss and listen to their reactions. So I would like to share that reflection. Response from admin was appropriate, and we've received quick, open, publicized response, especially given how, how this has gone in the past. However, we would have appreciated being contacted directly and being, being notified about the incident to give our thoughts. This is from the Jewish Student Union. In terms of moving forward, we don't want the response to be highly reactive and shortlives, which can be the way things go with these type of situations. Want to work with the school to put continued efforts in education into places so we can avoid incidents like this altogether. This really speaks to how, this isn't the first time in the last two years we've seen swastikas drawn at Cleveland, and it's not even the only hate incidents and antisemitic acts we've seen in Cleveland, not to mention the PPS schools across our district. We need to continue to not only respond to this, but implement prevention methods, teaching our students about this hate speech and ways to prevent it. We also need to educate our teachers, provide training on how to have these classroom discussions when hate speech does happen at their schools, and how to engage students in the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. I also want to note that King Elementary, the neighborhood school, was sprayed with hate speech inside and outside the building, and I've heard of incidents recently in southwest Portland schools, and they, they, they need to be addressed immediately. And I, I think, I agree with all of the, the statements, the, like, having a protocol to follow, offering trainings to students and teachers, perhaps at family nights. I mean, this hatred is learned at home, and so I think, you know, parents have a small role to play as well.
Yeah, and part of our conversation at the district student council was also how a lot of this kind of stems, a lot of this radicalization stems from middle school, so actually adding education at that level as well, instead of just starting at high school, where a lot of these ideologies have already coalesced in students.
Excellent, thank you. Director Lowry, did you have a report for intergovernmental? Director Brum Edwards, policy?
Just briefly, we had a policy committee meeting last week, and there are a number of policies out for public comment that are posted on pps.net, so if people want to comment on them before the board approves it, they're posted. And then we had a discussion about four items. One, some changes to the formal complaint policy to try and make the policy that compresses timeframe so that people aren't waiting for decisions for over a hundred days. So looking to make changes that to make it more friendly and fair and timely for our families. We also had a discussion about a conceptual draft around parent and community fundraising and the practice of individual schools purchasing, basically, staff and contracting staff and how we might limit that. Something we've been working with Chief of Staff Garcia on. And also Director DePass, who's a member of the committee, raised a conceptual policy that she would like to, for the committee to consider and to discuss in the next coming months related to anti-racism. We have a number of current racial equity and social justice policies that this would build on, and so we're looking forward to her bringing that forward. And then finally, just a notice that the recently passed climate policy has the, as one of the components, a climate, a climate response committee made up of community members, and that Director DePass and I are going to, going to be working on sort of the application process for community members. And so that will be something that will be coming forward, so if other board members or community members have people that they think would be effective members of that committee, we'd love them to apply.
Can I ask a question, Director Brum Edwards? I heard you mention the, the foundation policy, which I know we've been talking about for a while. I, I guess I was under the impression we were, and I want to be clear, I'm, I'm in favor of, of taking a look at the foundation policy. I think it's something that needs change. I thought we had talked at some point about holding off on that, given Southeast Boundary Coalition, budget issues, COVID, all their other things, and that is a, it's a huge change in the district and one that I think is really important. I guess my question is, is now the time to be having that conversation?
I, I think a lot of people would say, like, five years ago was the time. So we have worked through a lot of other issues that were brought, have been brought forward that we're effectively working through, and I say I've been working with Chief of Staff Garcia on a policy that, given the issues that were raised about what's happening of how, how we step into it, so it's not a cliff, but that certainly, this has been going on since, informal, an informal practice since nineteen ninety-eight, so I brought a conceptual amendment to the committee. We had initial discussion, and we're going to move ahead. And I'm happy to-
Yeah, and I guess honestly, my question is, do we need to have a conversation as a board about whether, and, and again, I'll, I'll acquiesce, if a majority of the board wants to move forward on that now, then we should do that, but if a majority of the board doesn't, I think we might want to pause. And honestly, my, my, my question is not about the substance, because I do think it's important. It's about, can we start another large community conversation right now in the midst of what is going to be a very challenging budget conversation as well? That, that this will add to that, you know?
So, again, I think, community members have been asking us to have this conversation for a long time, and I've managed the agenda with the issues that have been brought forward, forward by staff, by other committee members, and I think we have the space to have the conversation. And as the committee chair, it was my prerogative to put it on, on the, on the committee agenda, and we're having committee discussions, so I, I think it would be highly unusual for the board to be setting a committee agenda.
I, I want to also just add that there was discussion in November about taking a critical look at the workload in light of the staffing shortages and the transportation shortages, and that was a temporary kind of stop on anything that wasn't student-focused. But this, the fundraising policy is serious equity consequences, and our, and the, the way that it shows up in our, in our district highlights the disparities between our higher SES schools and our lower SES schools. And I think, I think it's upon us, it's upon us to take a critical look of, at how money flows through our, our system and who benefits and who is burdened by those flows. I, I feel strongly about it, actually. I mean, I was willing to kind of put the conversations on hold, but since it is such a, an equity issue, and it's, I, I think it's a really important topic to address, and I feel like, I, I don't know, I haven't spoken to, as to what the timing is, but I, I, I think that we can do both, get through our budget conversations and start to weave in the conversations about our, our fundraising.
So I don't disagree with, with anything you said. I, I think as a board, well, we have to get through the budget conversation, that's, that's legally binding, so that's going to happen regardless. I think if as a board, we say that the foundation policy is something we're going to tackle this spring, with all the community engagement that requires, I mean, it's a, it's a very complex process, we need, we need to also take some things off the superintendent and the district's plate. And so I, I just, I want to be clear about those trade-offs, and Director Brum Edwards, with all due respect, just because you brought it up, I, I, I actually don't think committee chairs get to drive their own agenda. They, you know, the, the board absolutely has a say in what, what any committee does, because again, it's that check-in process, and if a majority of the board wants to go a different direction, then a committee chair, I think, has to acquiesce to that. I don't know if that's where we are. What I'm asking is, is it worth having a conversation? To be honest, we are having the conversation now. I'm hearing from you, I'm hearing from Director DePass. I think I saw Director Hollins nod, but I don't want to put words in his mouth about moving forward on this. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're close. Again, if, if there's a, if there's a majority of the board that wants to do this, by all means, let's do it. But I'm going to keep raising this question of what, what else does this displace if we do this now? Because it is a Herculean effort, and one that I think, I don't disagree with anything that was said, very, very important, maybe the most important thing, although there are other also most important things that we're trying to tackle, so.
So I, I appreciate the comments, and at the start of the committee's work, I did talk to all the committee members. I also talked to staff about what things they wanted to have accomplished. I looked at the issues that were left over from the previous board, like the, the committee, including the climate. And I also, in our policy, our community can bring force policies, which a policy was brought forward. I've committed to work with staff on it. The reality is, the, the draft that was brought forward, I don't know, like, what the huge community conversation is, because the current draft, actually, the, the biggest impact would probably be only to the five wealthiest school communities in this, in this district. And for a long period of time, so I've tried to draft it in a way that, to minimize the impact, recognizing, you know, what is at play with our schools. But I also, I say, have worked with staff and looking to step into it and not have it be a cliff. But currently, I say, for twenty years, parents in this community have been talking to me and, I think, to other people about the equity of individual schools commuting, being able to buy multiple FTEs, and other school communities not being able to do that.
So I'm going to say again, because I don't want anyone to put words in my mouth, I'm in favor of changing this foundation policy. I was in favor a year ago, I was in favor two years ago when the issue first, you know, was addressed to me. I think it's an important issue. We have eighteen schools that receive additional staffing from this. So even if we're willing to go forward, the engagement with those schools and those communities is going to be really, really important, is my point. Again, I'm all in favor of making the change, but making the change without a good process and engagement will backfire on us. And, and it's going to be very, it's going to be incumbent on all seven of us to be having those conversations with the community. You are losing staff because this is the positive impact that's going to happen, and that's a hard, hard conversation. I just don't want us to understate the difficulty of that.
And I just want to be clear, I said eighteen, Andrew. It'd be eighteen schools that would experience loss of FTE due to the policy change. So when you said, you said five schools would experience changes-
It depends on the year.
You guys, I'm, I'm going to move us along. I appreciate the clarification. So those, we would want to know not just the number of schools, but where those schools are, what the number of free and reduced is, lunches. And, and so we have the who of who's been impacting, not just, you know, at the building level, but at the human level. So more to come on that. It's a, it's a good discussion to have, but not tonight. Director Hollins, did you want to report on Facilities and Operations?
We don't have anything to report on. We have a Facilities and Operations Committee meeting tomorrow at five o'clock. Three things that'll be on the agenda will be Jefferson High School's school modernization update, Center for Black Ex, Student Excellence update, and the Harriet Tubman relocation piece. So those will all be on the agenda for tomorrow at five PM.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And on that note, I just want to say that I've, I've gotten lots of community questions around what's, what the status update is of the Center for Black Student Excellence, and I think that was one of the things that we talked about putting a pause on for now, but I wanted to say there's great interest in the, a pause on from the staff side, not the, the, the development is happening. But we have, you know, a hundred and twenty million, give or take, investment in the relocation of Harriet Tubman Middle School. We have sixty million through the bond for the center, development for the Center for Black Student Excellence. The Albina Vision Plan, one of our, I hope, key partners, has also a Center for Black Excellence. There's the Jefferson Modernization, which has three hundred and eleven million dollar potential investment. And so we need to figure out with Albina Vision Trust and our other racial equity, social justice partners, how we can move together with this five hundred million dollar and probably counting investments in Albina. We need to do it right, we don't need to do it fast, but we need to be intentional about it, we need to be community-leaning, community-leading, and I just want to, I, I'm, there's a renewed interest from community members on, on getting this started and getting it done correctly, the engagement piece, et cetera.
Chair, thank you for those remarks, because we couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. We want to do this thoughtfully. We are anxious to accelerate work that has been, in some ways, on pause during this pandemic. You heard earlier, we still haven't finalized a recommendation for the board's consideration of Southeast Guiding Coalition. That was also a priority. There's a lot of complexities in trying to come to consensus there. That hasn't been wrapped up because we want to include, be more inclusive there, and I know there's talk of what comes next. And I don't think Director Hollins will mind me asking, but we were having this very same conversation this week, and the engagement, the thoughtful engagement in bringing multiple school communities together just to open the conversation on Tubman. And so I do worry, because it's the same team of people trying to be thoughtful and do a meaningful job with each of these important areas of work. So I just ask the board to be mindful of that, because on top of the budget development and everything that has to happen in the springtime, we don't want to drop any balls, and we want to do this carefully, and this involves many different school communities who have strong input and ideas about the direction that we go next.
Thank you. And, you know, we can't forget those first graders, that'll be, you know, middle schoolers by the time this is complete. So I think, Director Hollins, you'd mentioned, you know, getting those students, the little ones, involved. They're really fun to work with when you're designing, you know, envisioning projects that, that they'll be able to play with, or play on, or learn in, so that's an amazing, a great recommendation, and I just wanted to place a marker for that. Elections Task Force, did you have any updates?
Yeah, we met last night, and the Task Force is going to be recommending to the board that we move forward with simple map changes at this point. So that would be, if you remember back, Scenario A, which just sort of, sort of tweaks the boundaries right now to adjust for the new, the new census. PSU, we did send them back to do a couple of additional changes, and so they, they made those changes and presented the maps, those revised maps to us last night, based on, on those. We will be, and, and they were adding a little bit more data. There was a very specific question about the demographics of each zone compared to the demographics of the city overall, so they're adding a table for that. And then, once that table's added, which I think will be relatively soon, we will send the, the PSU memo and the, the recommended maps to the board. We'll be sending those by email, and then put you in touch with PSU if you have any very specific data questions around it, and then the plan is to bring this on April fifth for a vote, assuming that there's no big issues. Again, these are just small tweaks, and just to remind anyone listening, these are about our elections, they're not about school boundaries. So this is, doesn't affect a school at all, it just affects where the zones are, and adjusting for the census. So this is, doesn't affect a school at all, it just affects where the zones are and adjusting for the census and the fact that people have moved within our zones, and so we by law are required to adjust those to account for that. So hopefully coming back on April fifth. And then, I'm sorry, then we will have much longer discussion over the next couple of years about some of the other issues around, you know, campaign finance, allowing students to vote in elections, potentially allowing, you know, undocumented residents to vote. And so all of those are things that would require bigger legislative changes, but I know there's a lot of interest in, so we'll put those on the medium and long-term agenda.
Fantastic, thank you. Do we have any other business before we adjourn for the evening to head to our work session with CBRC, the Budget Committee? Seeing that there's not, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on April fifth, and this meeting is adjourned.